Okay, bienvenidos, there's a settle, welcome to right from the start, my guest today, it's a friend. And she is running for Brian ISD school board, Audrey Flores Brigando, Audrey, welcome to the podcast.
Thank you, Manuel, thank you.
Yeah, uh, thanks for coming, uh, like I, like I was saying earlier, uh, I was driving around down all around downtown or in, in, in Brian and I saw your, your, your posters everywhere. And, uh, we're gonna talk about all that and, uh, and running for school board. And, uh, you know what motivated you and, and all that, but, but to start off, uh, we wanna know, we wanna get to know Audrey from right from the start from does this settle, that's what that means, uh, Audrey, where were you born, Audrey?
I was born right here in Brian, Texas.
Brian, Texas, and, uh, parents?
Um, Mike and Millie Flores, they owned Eminem grocery store on Sim Street. My dad was, I guess, owned also a several businesses, a pest control business, a bar on Grozbeck, and then the grocery store on, um, on Sims.
Right, and your mom?
My mom was a wonderful homemaker, great supportive mother, so.
Did you have any siblings?
I have one younger brother, he is, ooh, let me add, he's four years younger than I am, so, um, his name is Adrian. Um, locally, many people know him by the name of Igor, and that's his nickname, given to him by my father.
Oh, okay.
Not my mother, she was not unhappy with that, that, the nickname.
Right, right, and, uh, Audrey, tell me about your, your childhood, how was, how was growing up in, in Brian, you, you grew up in West, West Brian?
Yes, I grew up in West Brian, so I lived kind of all over West Brian, Sim Street, Rosedale, Mockingbird. I did move to Carter Creek for a little while, and then moved to more like Monito Way area, Westwood, Maine.
Right, and, uh, what, what elementary school did you attend, did you attend multiple because you moved a lot, or what?
No, I had one of the, my father, um, I think utilized either an address with my aunt, um, so I attended Henderson all, um, four years.
And of course, we all went to Lamar for fifth grade.
Yes, sir.
And we went to Carver for sixth grade, and that's where you and I met.
Correct.
With, uh, Janey, which she was in a couple of podcasts back, and, uh, we had a blessing our podcast. But, uh, we all met at Carver, and that was, which was sixth grade, and, and of course, Anthony Jones, seventh, and then SFA, and, you know, ended up graduating from Brian High at class of ninety-one, correct? How, how were you in school, were you like a smart, were you like middle, were you like, I don't wanna go?
I would say I was middle ground, like educate academically. I did take a couple of AP classes, I was never really good at mathematics, so it was not my best subject. But I remember high school was a big social experience, like experience, just having, being engaged socially in club, clubs or extracurricular activities, um, enjoying kind of the after school, I never was a person who didn't wanna go to school. Because I really didn't wanna miss out on whatever was happening at lunch or before, before school.
Right, so you had that, uh, like, like you said, you were socially involved with, with, with your friends, and you wanted to be involved in school.
Correct.
Uh, what, what kind of extracurricular activities did you?
I did do track once, I would say one semester, um, and then I think I got sick, and my very sweet Hispanic mother was like, no, you can't run. So, um, but then I was involved in like student council, class council, um, trying to think of some other little clubs. They are not coming to my mind.
Right, right, but, uh, like, like student council, council and, and all that, I, I've never got involved with that part of it. You know, by, by the age of thirteen, I was already musician, and, you know, that was my extracurricular activities.
Which is a great.
Right, but, uh, what, what was, what was it like, uh, uh, being in like the student council, what, what, what did it entail, what, what was involved in, in being a student council?
You're gonna test my memory, so, from what I can vaguely recall, it's more of like in making decisions on what extra activities are we gonna do, or, um, like senior skip out things, um,
That was fun.
Or fundraisers we're gonna do, of course that was fun. Or different fundraisers we're gonna do, or even the theme for prom, or homecoming, and back then we had Sadie Hawkins, so themes for Sadie Hawkins too. That's what I remember, there could have been a lot more involved, but I don't remember.
Right, and, uh, again, like we said, you graduated in nineteen ninety-one with all of us. And, uh, it was, it was a fun time, uh, I, I don't remember any, any, uh, bad memories of, of, of our, our school years.
Neither do I, I just don't recall any of them.
Right, right, you know, like, like I was telling you earlier, I, I recall certain things, uh, you know, that, that kinda stuck with me, but, but you know, we're, we're already in there, we're already up there, so we've been through a lot.
I remember what happened last week.
But right after high school, what, what do you, what do you do?
I did apply to Saint Mary's University in San Antonio, and I did get accepted. However, at the very last minute, I was too scared to go.
What was that?
I was honestly, if I, when I had to think back about it, I was too scared to leave my mom. I didn't want to be away from her, and I thought that that was too far, so I was like, I'll just go to Blinn. Applied to Blinn, and my goal at that time was to transfer to A and M, but I didn't end up transferring to A and M.
Okay, and, uh, why was that, did, did, did you just not want to, or did you find, uh, a better opportunity, uh, at another school?
You know, I'll just be honest with you, my high school sweetheart, who was Chad Petty, um, went to SFA, and I guess.
You followed a boy.
Followed a boy. Did not make my father happy, he's like, you just got into A and M, what do you mean you're going to SFA?
I've heard a lot of those stories, followed a boy, or followed a girl.
Yes.
But, you know, it, it was a time, I guess, and, and, uh, what, what did you, uh, major in, or what was your purpose of going to, to college?
I did major in psychology, I, I believe that was honestly, when I first, when we were in, you know, in high school, trying to figure out what do we want our career to be, I think junior and senior year, my whole goal was I was gonna go become a marine biologist and work with whales. I'm not even sure when that shifted, but it shifted rather quickly, uh, maybe because I didn't do well in chemistry. But psychology just kinda felt natural, I think I took a, a psychology course in high school, and then took a, you have to take one as or an optional elective when you're at Blinn, took that and kinda went with it and really enjoyed the courses. And I remember before freshman year ended, my major was psych, psych, and I was sticking to it.
All right, did, uh, did you enjoy, uh, uh, those, those courses, or I mean, why, why did you stick to it? Uh, why, why did it change?
They really came naturally to me, it was second nature, it was along with my thought processes. And I don't think it became, it was, I don't think it was difficult, even as like a psychology statistics class came easy, which math had never really come easily to me before.
As, as a psychologist, what, what, what do you do, what, what is the, the thing that?
So, throughout my career, my first job was in more vocational counseling. While I was in graduate school, I did work in the education department, uh, as a graduate student doing statistics, so ran numbers and hosted presentations about kind of the research the department was doing. But my first job was vocational counseling, more marketing, and I worked for the Texas Workforce Commission in East Texas. And it was right when Bush privatized everything, so my employer wasn't the state of Texas, it was Lockheed Martin.
Right, so you pretty much had to move out of our area.
Well, I moved there for school, and then I kinda stayed there, um, worked in Lufkin and, and Nacogdoches. And I, I didn't move back, I'm trying to think of the year, I already was married and had a one-year-old when I moved back to Brian College Station.
What year did you get married?
Two thousand. I had to think about that one.
Had, uh, had, had you already completed your, your college, have you?
Yes, so I completed my master's degree in two thousand, well, not really, I graduate, I got married in May, I'm, I'm saying that wrong, I'm sorry. I got married in April of two thousand. Then I got married in May of two thousand. Nope, I just said that wrong, sorry, I got married in April of two thousand, and I graduated. I got married in April of two thousand, then I graduated with my master's degree in May of two thousand.
Would, would you, uh, come, come down and visit every once in a while, or did you just stay down there?
No, we came down quite a bit, because, again, um, even though I was motivated to move and go to a different school, I still really had a, a really close bond with my mom, and my dad at the, as well as my father, but he lived in Austin during that, during my college years.
So, uh, when you arrived back to, to, to Brian College Station, what, what do you do?
So when I first arrived back to Brian College Station, my first job, I got a job teaching at, in Tomball, um, at Lonest, well, it was called Montgomery County Community College at the time, but now it's transferred, they've had a rebranding and a new name, it's Lone Star College. So I taught there, and I counseled at Health For All. So I did, um, Health For All is in a clinic for people who are uninsured, and anybody who didn't have mental health benefits. I did their counseling there as well.
Right, so what, uh, I, I, I'm guessing you, you, you taught, uh, psychology.
Yes.
Uh, what was that, what was that like, what was that experience like? Let's say for your first couple of years.
The first semester and the second semester are probably the most difficult, you have to design your classes, make sure you know the material, make your PowerPoints, um, develop your exams. To- today, it's a little bit different, cuz most of the textbooks kinda give you a test bank and, um, give you PowerPoints to utilize, so back in that time period, you, you were given a textbook, that, we didn't really have eBooks, um, we didn't have, if we had resources that came with the book, it was like in a, in a binder this big, so you're looking through everything. Wasn't as easily accessible as what we have now with the internet.
Okay, uh, was that around what, year, two twenty, two, two thousand two, two thousand three?
So I started teaching in two thousand four.
Two thousand four is when you started, and that was your first, first time ever teaching?
So, uh, oddly, I only worked for the Texas Workforce Commission for about a year. After I heard, had my first child, I was, I loved my position, I traveled, promoted the, the programs that, with the Workforce Center in East Texas. However, I didn't wanna leave my baby, and so I really was, I tossed and turned about what I was gonna do. And a different type of job fell into my lap, um, the guy that took my job while I was on maternity leave loved my job, didn't really want to give it up. And I didn't really wanna go back, but you're kind of committed to go back after you use FMLA. So it turned out that he knew a psychologist that worked at, um, through his church, he introduced me to that psychologist, and then that actually started my clinical career. I worked in East Texas doing psych assessments, so where I was, uh, testing people, IQ achievement, um, he had a contract with the, um, state of Texas at the time, so anybody who was applying for disability had to be tested by a state contracted, um, psychologist, and I worked under him, and did that.
How long did you do that for?
From two thousand one, so my child was born in April, from about July of two thousand one until probably two thousand seven, so when I moved here, I still continued to do that as I, um, I would drive back three days a week to do the assessments back to Lufkin.
Okay, wow, that's, that's pretty far.
But it was only for you do, when you do assessments, you're doing it for the five hours and all the report writing I could do from home.
Right, when, when do you decide to, uh, leave all that and just stick around in, in BCS and do what you do now, what do you do now?
Well, I didn't stay in BCS long. I went to school to work on my doctorate, so and I, I got an internship.
And what was that?
It was actually through an online university, Walden University. I did get an internship in Pennsylvania, so, or right around two thousand seven, I, my ex-husband and I did get a divorce. Um, he joined the military, so he was stationed in upstate New York, and as I was looking for an internship, I realized I could, uh, there were a couple in Pennsylvania, and that would put us kinda closer together for the kids to be able to see them. So I moved myself to Pennsylvania in two thousand and eight.
How many kids did you have with your first husband?
Two.
Two boys, what was their name?
James Petty and John Petty, James is twenty-four and John is twenty.
Okay, and, uh, you moved to Pennsylvania, and, uh, how long did you stay there?
I stayed there until two thousand and thirteen. But I came back with a new husband, a third child, and one on the way, and I didn't know about it.
Yeah, you, you were pretty busy out there.
Apparently, it was cold.
What, uh, what made you decide to come back to?
Well, ironically, my ex-husband and I did agree at our, at our, during our divorce, that we would always try to live near one another. Even though we couldn't get along, I feel like it's very important for children to have access to both parents. He was engaged right as he was leaving the military, was getting married that, the summer of two thousand and twelve. His wife was from Maryland, so she li- was born and raised in Washington DC. She came to visit my community, it was very small, I lived in a small town, Hermitage, Sharon, they're kinda like sister cities like Brian and College Station. But they were as big as Brian was when we were in middle school.
Okay.
So they were really tiny, she, they didn't have a Starbucks, we had a Walmart, the biggest restaurant we had was Golden Corral.
Nice.
She could not, she could not handle that, she was like, I can't do it. And so he, we really thought about, my, my current husband is from New Jersey, so we did entertain the idea of like living up north. Him somewhere close enough to where the kids, we could travel and the kids could see each other, but it's rather expensive to live up north. And I was, we weren't really interested in that, we really couldn't decide upon where we were gonna move. And I said, you know what, if I have to pick up again with my children, I'd rather just go home. Um, it was very difficult making family connections or people you could trust to help you with school pickup, or, interviewing babysitters when you have to work when school's not in session. Uh, my mom, I was lucky enough that my mom went with me for a couple of years, but then she did have to come home, and so she would go travel to see my brother and go back and forth the whole time. So the big decision to move home was, I didn't wanna start over making all those connections, and if I was going to have to move, I might as well just move home, where, where I kind of know everybody, so he and his wife moved to Texas, and my husband and our children moved to Texas.
Wow, that's, uh, it's pretty amazing that, that, you know, after all that, you guys still can decide to.
We tried to work together, I'm not saying we get along on all issues, but we definitely work those things out. Ironically, my current husband and ex-husband, both, I'm the one they pick on if.
So, uh, so what, what do you do here in, in Brian College Station?
So here, my full-time job is I work for Promises Behavioral Health, um, they're substance abuse and re- mental health rehabilitation center. The corporation has about six facilities nationwide, and I work for their corporate offices, so I do get the pleasure of working from home.
Okay.
With the flexibility, we have a facility in College Station, and that's where I started with them. Um, I, prior to that, I did work for Rock Prairie Behavioral Health, but they closed down during COVID, and between the two facilities opening, I did teach full-time at SAM and taught part-time at Blinn.
Okay, and do you currently teach at Blinn, is that what you were, we were talking earlier that?
Yeah, so I still teach Blinn, I'm adjunct, I have two classes at Blinn. And they're both in psychology, and I teach online, so I love teaching at SAM. Uh, but I couldn't do the traveling back and forth with a full-time job, so I, I teach a class online every semester.
How many kids do you have now?
Four.
And what's the youngest?
Eleven.
So is that the reason why you kinda wanna stick around and stay here?
It is easier if I'm local, um, if I'm not traveling to go to work. You gotta get school pickup, or if there's something going on, my husband always worked locally, so we've had that, or my father, when he was more able, he picked up the kids from school or dropped them off in the morning, took them, you know, have breakfast and went, went places. My, um, mother lives with me, so there's always some sort of adult in my house.
So, um, well, let's get to it, the reason why you're here.
The reason why I'm here.
You are running for Brian ISD District Five, or District Three?
District Five.
District Five, and, uh, for, for, uh, Brian ISD, and, uh, the first question is, I guess, what, what inspired you or motivated you to, to run for, for school board?
I have been interested since my oldest son was in school. The interest sparked from knowing that there, there's, I'm trying to think of the right answer, um, there are things that are a resource to us as parents of Brian ISD students, that not all parents are privy to, they don't, they're not aware. Messing up our podcast, man, um, so, if there is an issue behaviorally, emotionally, academically, even sports-wise. My older son, or my younger son, so the twenty-year-old, he was injured while he was playing football at SFA. And I was aware that I can use my health insurance, the school has a health insurance, um, they have to help pay those, the fees, and they did. They did that, they didn't fight me on it, they did a really good job. However, one of my other son's friends was injured, and his mother knew nothing about it. And so I give her the information, and she's like, surely that's not true, cuz you know, every time you have an athlete, and you, your son's played baseball and, and tennis, right? So you get that notification at the beginning of the year that you can get that extra insurance. Well, you don't have to get that extra insurance, they still have an insurance that covers your student along with your healthcare. And so trying to get that information to parents made me, like, see that there's some disparities in, in the knowledge that's given to parents. And some of the parents weren't really interested in calling the school or asking about it. Um, they may or may not have believed me when I'm giving them the information, but they were also too shy to step up and ask the questions, or out of fear that they'd be judged or something, I, I rarely can't say why they did it, but that was just my assumption. And then also behaviorally, like my, um, twenty-year-old, he's very smart, and so he always did really well, didn't have to study, I remember in, in kindergarten, when you start learning your spelling words, I'd used to make my older son write them out five times, make the sentences, he's like, mom, I really don't have to do that. So you'd get those spelling words on Monday, Monday night, he knew exactly how to spell them.
Memorization.
Yeah, he just knew them, he's, he's got very good language skills, but he was always bored in his English classes, because he knew everything really quickly, and so if there was a commotion or something that he could distract his peers, I, you know, if he did something like that, I'd discipline him, but I realized during that time, I'm reaching out to the, this teacher, we're talking about what we should do. Um, how do I help her support him, you know, doing his work, and then maybe focusing on something else instead of trying to talk to his friends? But as I was talking to his parents, his friends' parents, they didn't know they could reach out, that they don't feel like they they didn't feel like they could talk to the teacher and say, well, let me know what I should do, or, there are some parents that do, but not every parent. So I remember during that time, having the interest of like, hey, I feel like the parents need someone on our school board that they feel like they can come to, or feel like they, they, that can advocate for them. And not, uh, that's really my hope to be that I've get for parents, and hoping to make sure I reach out to parents when, during their time in need to know that they have a resource.
What, what, what is the role of a school board, uh, member?
So school boards are just like any sort of entity, a board with corporations, even though it's not a business, it is kind of a business, when we're in the business of educating students. Um, the board is there to, you know, translate state legislature, guide the superintendent and, and the administrators in implementation and understanding, and, and, and monitoring the budget, making sure we're spending things appropriately. So they're more of like guidance counselors. For the school administration.
Right, what, what specific strengths do you bring to the board?
I personally did, I was just on, at my old school in Pennsylvania, it was a private Catholic school, so they didn't have a school board, but they had like an advisory committee. So I was on that advisory committee, and so I feel like I have some his, history experience with helping guide the administration, support the administration. And I've been pretty active within the school systems here, I wouldn't say I was very active when I had four children at home. I did kind of pull away from extracurricular, you know, I was still a homeroom mom, or a supportive mom, a baseball mom, like the team moms, and being involved, however, when you have four, that was really difficult, I had teenagers and and toddlers at the same time, so my time was really focused.
Right, right, what, what do you see is the most pressing challenges in your district right now?
Right now, I definitely think parents feeling like they can go to the board. Um, three, three years ago, I really wanted to run, um, I had the application filled out, was gonna turn it in, but unfortunately, I learned that my husband had some health complications, and when you get something kind of major as far as some, a health issue that's gonna affect your entire family, I, I didn't, I didn't reach out, but during that time period, I would hear parents say, well, I went to the board, but I had to sit and wait for hours before I could speak, so I had to leave, I didn't get to, to speak. Um, during that time, wanting to be somebody on that board to advocate for those parents who have issues, but may not, can't stay for a two-hour, three-hour meeting, to stick through, um, fast forwarding to now, parents don't have to wait long, um, the, the state of Texas changed the rules, they have to go first, if a parent comes with an issue to the school board, they have to, they, they have to, they're required to let the parents teach first, or speak first. So that's not really an issue now, but I do know that there are questions, as I've been door knocking, meeting voters, well, they wanna know, well, what's happening with the budget? Why are we asking for this bond, and, and I think Ginger Caravan's done a great job trying to spell it all out online, and realizing that not every parent enjoys going online or searching, I mean, we all love Facebook, trust me, and Instagram, but researching something and re- and reading it, um, sometimes becomes cumbersome. But she has had some face-to-face, face, kind of like, um, reviews of what's going on with the bond, but most of the people that I've met voter-wise, they wanna know specifically, what are we doing with the budget? Why are our teachers asking us to donate paper? Why are the science teacher asking for supplies? I think when s- the school, or even, um, extracurriculars are asking for, hey, donate this, or, or do this, parents start to question, well, we do get funds, what are those funds, what are we doing with all those funds? And granted, it's not a whole lot of money, it's not like the state of Texas just throws extra, extra millions, do what you want, and, uh, with the funds. Most of the funds are earmarked for certain things. But I don't think parents are getting their, their questions answered, um, I, I had a couple of parents say, well, I was told to go and request it, or I was told it's all online, well, navigating online and figuring out where things are very difficult. Not that I would be able to navigate online any better than they would as a parent, but being on the school board, it can help with the transparency of that information.
What is the, uh, current working and learning environment in your district?
What do you mean by that?
Uh, what, what is, what is, what is it like in, in, in the environment, I mean, is, is it, uh, specific, uh, say, uh, are, are they teaching what they need to be teaching, or, or the teachers, uh, receiving what they need to receive to do their job? Uh, what, what is the environment in, in your, in your district?
I think educationally, we are delivering the information that we need to be delivering. Are the teachers getting the things that they need? I can't say, I don't think so, um, because, again, I would say I've heard questions from parents about asking why we're donating extra supplies, and that's from all districts, not just my district, so I, I don't think that we're giving teachers the support that they actually need, I know that teachers spend a lot of their own money to supply their room with items, and so much to, teachers have Amazon wish lists, so for parents to kinda help donate. I've heard a story recently that teachers were saying they didn't have staplers, um, and that was from a parent. And, okay, we should all, we should have the basic necessities to, to. In, okay, we should all, we should have the basic necessities to to
Some students don't have computers or can't afford computers.
Correct, and I know the school district does provide them back during COVID, they provided them and let you take them home. They don't do that now. They're assigned in each in each class and they stay there with um my schools, like my children, my son attends, my eleventh grader attends Davila. It's outside of our district. Um, because he's in the Inspire program and that he's his the last grade to have Inspire. They've moved to aspire, so they've combined the STEM Honors Program and the um general aspy- aspire program together so that each middle school and intermediate school will have those programs in them.
How would how would you work to ensure that all of the voices in our community are heard?
I think that's a rather big and tough question, cause I can say I would like to listen and hear out every parent with every concern. But I know that takes a lot of time. And I, so I would think I would I would start by first trying to let parents know I am here for them. I would like to be your resource, getting them to come forth with some of their questions or answers. So it's gonna have to come from many avenues, cause you can't necessarily meet face to face with everyone. Um, putting questions on um maybe a website or in a specific email with these questions. Um, or even getting that information out. Those things may exist. Um, I think I learned just a week ago that I made a comment to one of the counselors. I said, oh, well, my kids never turn in their their excuses. Like, I give them to them. I always take a picture of them in case I have to print them again, cause once I've had to go to to their counselor and get like three or four printouts, so I can turn them in. And I learned that there's a, there's an email address, so if your kids have um missed class and you wanna send it in directly to this email address, I'm like, okay, I've been in Brian ISD since, let's see, one of my kids, mm my twenty five year old or twenty four year old was, he came into Brian ISD in seventh grade, so that was two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. I'm just now learning, there's a specific email for each school that you can send your excuses to. Um, for missed for missed classes, so getting a place where all this information can get out, conveying that in multiple avenues or venues or ways to get that information to parents.
How would you address the the learning needs of diverse students?
That's interesting because I do, um, my first two students were, or my children, were were advanced learners. Um, my second child is also in an, um, or sorry, third child is also an advanced learner, so he's they're all in kind of the, they were in matriculated through the advanced programs. My final child does have an IEP, so learning the flip side of someone who does need supports and resources to achieve their goals academically um with the learning disability, I see that there's a wide variety of of supports out there, but not all parents know. I do know that I've heard parents say I'm very fearful of going into my IEP because they're, they don't know everything. Uh, my first IEP with my youngest son, I
What's IEP on?
Oh, good, I'm sorry. I've I've done this twice. An individualized education plan, so every child um who has a need or a behavioral health need or an intellectual need will have an individualized education plan, so I'm sorry, I've done that twice. Or I've not explained that, cause not all parents know. But with this plan, you can, you know, they'll do assessments for your child. They'll tell you what their needs are, what their weaknesses are and their strengths. And then they also offer support. What can we do in the classroom to help your child achieve everything that they need to achieve? And it can range from teaching them how to hold their pencil or their pen, cutting properly um with their scissors or even having things read to them, so if eh kids have processing disorders that help them get that information in and then ways of getting that information out.
So, uh, what should our school district be doing to ensure the safety of students and staff?
That is a big one as well.
Yeah, because recently or, you know, for a while now, there's been a lot.
Of schools.
Of sh- school shootings, I mean, and not only that, but school fights and and teachers get involved and they get hurt and so you it 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 doesn't necessarily have to be school shootings, but there there are a bunch of other stuff. Safety, yeah.
I think we have to first start with being transparent of what's actually happening in our schools. Um, I do know for as far as global safety, each school, at least the elementary schools and intermediate schools have an officer on on site. I've not been to the high school, so I can't say that that's happening that I've witnessed it, but from what I've been learned and told that each school has a designated officer to their site, so that's one thing. But even with safety with teachers, um, I remember uh when my third child was at Jane Long. His fir-, you know, most parents are like, no, you're, don't put your kids in Jane Long, that's the bad school. Well, there are no bad schools. Behavioral issues that may need more attention than others and it it can vary, cause I I think other schools may have similar issues. It just aren't as transparent as they need to be. But with that, I remember my son coming home and he's like, oh, I saw my first fight today. And I was like, oh, my gosh, were you scared? He's like, no, are you kidding? I wanted, I wanted to be right up there watching it. Because he wasn't the, it was my my thirteen, thirteen right now and he and he and um, he's like, mom, it was so exciting. I said, I'm not sure that's the reaction you should have. Uh, but let's talk about what happened. Let's talk about what you what you felt and what was going on. And then in another instance, he dis- uh he discussed that his teacher was hit by a couple of girls and she was injured. I actually reached out to the administration, not the board, but this of that specific school. And, oh, that didn't happen, or um, we have that under control. That isn't the answer. Correct, that isn't the answer parents wanna hear. They wanna know that that teacher, and you can't give specifics. I get there's privacy of of help of information, but a general consensus of like, hey, the teacher's fine, discipline has been issued. We are going to do what we can to provide an intervention that something like this doesn't happen again. And I think that's all parents really wanna know. What are the interventions in place to reduce this from occurring?
Uh, do you support the no phone policy?
Ironically, yes.
Why is that?
I know a lot of parents don't.
Yeah, everybody's angry.
Everybody is angry, cause they wanna be able to reach their kids. And I I've read stories online where you know, they're learning to communicate via their computers, like sending an email or an instant message. But I do think that not having your phone right there helps you stay focused, because if you have just a downtime and you're on your phone, it's gonna create an issue. However, I don't recall any of my students, all all three of my um older kids have taken their phones to school when we could have our phones. And I recall them all saying, oh, well, we have to give our teacher our phone at the beginning of class. We have to, we don't really have it during our class, but then they could have it from class to class. So when we're doing that, I do know it takes up some time to take, get grab phones, put them in a one specific place and then gather them again and take them with you. So we may have been eating up some instruction time that we we really needed to focus on. My fifth grader, he's never, he had the opportunity to utilize his phone at an elementary school, but I don't really give kids a phone until they're ten. So he didn't really have much of an opportunity, so he doesn't know any different, like he was the best masked student because kindergarten, he had twenty, eh he had kindergarten in twenty twenty. Um, we went back to school for twenty twenty one. He didn't know a difference. He didn't remember a time where he couldn't wear a mask, so he was my best mask wearer. Um, so he doesn't know a difference. My thirteen year old really has adjusted really well, but I do know that other parents are having an issue. I I was at a meeting with um some parents at A and M and they weren't necessarily discussing Brian ISD things, but a mom was bringing up the fact that she won't know if her daughter made the volleyball team till the end of the day, cause she can't use her phone. So that information, she's like, I don't know if I should celebrate or not celebrate, should I show up with balloons? So those are things that I think parents are missing. And when we were growing up, our parents had no idea. You know, hopefully, unless they got a call from the school, they didn't know anything. And so I think that is a, it's a transitional, like we're having a hard time transitioning to not being connected to our kids.
I I think it's more the parents than than the kids, right?
I don't know, cause I do know kids would like their phones, like they
But as far as communicating with, we wanna know where our kids are at all.
Correct, we do. I mean, we've become, we've become that society where, I mean, I, my twenty four year old had me on location finders for probably five years and I had no idea. So and and now, and he's always shared his location too. I didn't even know.
So, uh, uh, you mentioned masks just a while ago, uh, during the pandemic, uh, did you agree with with the the school closing for for as long as they did?
Well, I think during the time, it was a scary situation. Yeah, we didn't know what COVID was. We didn't know what was going to happen, so I definitely was happier my kids were home with me safe. Weirdly, it was a transition issue for me as well. My twenty four year old is his first year in college. He had to come home. He couldn't manage doing things online. He's like, this is why I went to school and I like face to face, so he, you know, trying to give him support so he can learn to be an online learner. Um, my twenty year old, who was like eleven at the time, was in heaven. He essentially was like, nobody's bothering me, nobody asked me to leave my room. I'm good, like he he really didn't have any issues. That older kid had issues, cause he was missing that socialization. Um, my third child is thirteen now. I felt like our school system, at least Mary Branch, did a very good job giving us what we needed to do and then having hosting the classes, like the PE teacher was online. We'd go online and do our PE. Uh, the school counselor did a, was wonderful. Um, she'd host a a session with kids and like three or four kids. Sometimes ten kids would log on and just be on there with the counselor, maybe not necessarily talking about how rough it is to be at home. They're just socializing, talking about things and ironically, I remember uh, my husband was working from home and my husband's a very loud talker, this um, I guess Italian people, he says Italian people talk really loud. So he was really loud and my son and I were um in the room on the on the computer with the counselor and they're talking and it was just two students in there, well, three, my two children and the um, a little girl that was in my thirteen year old's class. And all of a sudden, you could hear someone yelling. And she asked the little girl, are you okay? Is your brother yelling at you, knowing she was home with her older brother? And she just, the little girl looked bewildered, she said, nobody's yelling and I felt bad. I was like, I'm sorry, that's my husband. He's actually on a Zoom call. That's his normal voice. That's his normal voice, he's working. Um, and then my kindergartner, that was a rough thing because I felt like I didn't focus on him as much, because I was also learning to be online. I taught college and I didn't use E Campus for anything but putting my grades in. I didn't have PowerPoints on E Campus. I didn't have lectures on E Campus. I did everything face to face, so I too had to transition, so it was a difficult time. Do, I know it was hard for parents to have their kids home for that long. The next semester, while they're still home, I actually had to go back into the classroom at the college level, so we were face to face. But I also had the supports of my husband working from home. My mom was home. I had resources to pay for a tutor to come, so but I don't think everyone had that. Uh, I know for sure not everyone had that. So I do think it was a little difficult for many families to sustain that for a long period of time, especially as we started going back to work. Some of us, you know, ever, most of us were all sent home initially, but then you would slowly were going back to work and that made it very difficult for families.
So if that happens again, what what a- as a school board member, what what would be your? I guess, eh eh eh, what would we do now? What different, what what different uh things would you would you do?
I think we've learned a lot through living through, um, I believe just reading the Spanish flu had the same kind of response. Um, instead of like having everybody go home, they did a lot of classroom instruction outside. Cause you know, getting the sun and getting the fresh air kind of lowers your incidences. I would like to see how we can actually use what we've learned to lessen the time of being at home, away from the classroom. Uh, because I do believe that our kids missed out on great, a great deal of socialization. Learning how to speak to each other, learning to read social cues. When you're an online learner, you don't always have that. I mean, a text message, you can misread everything where if you're face to face, you ca- you get a better understanding of what's happening and reading the room essentially.
So, uh, I believe it was this year or earlier last year, uh, we were in the in the in the social media thing about bullying. Someone, someone at a at the Rudder was bullied and it became a big thing in social media. Uh, what kind of, uh, I guess, uh, policies do we have in in order for anti-bullying in in our districts?
We have plenty of policies that actually help with the anti-bullying. Are they always implemented? I don't think so. I think right now we have kids with behavioral issues or um, certain disorders that don't quite understand what they're doing and I don't think we're providing the support and discipline to them. And discipline doesn't mean you're taking them out of the classroom. I mean, of course, their discipline when we were in school. They don't do that now, so I'm not saying discipline in the sense of taking something away or being in a harsh, a a harsh consequence, but there should always be consequences to someone's actions. You don't learn from your own behavior or mistakes if there's not a consequence. So some of it is reteaching, um, doing reflection with behavior. Even speaking to kids about the ripple effect of what happens with bullying. Uh, as a parent, I've been on both sides of the fence where I've had a child feel bullied. And then I've had a child be accused of being the bully. For me, as the parent, um, when my child felt like he was being bullied, we discussed why someone becomes a bully or how, what are their variables, cause you can't really know unless you know that child, what's happening. But giving him the broadest perspective and then giving him his resources, you can tell me, you can tell your teachers, you need to speak up. You can also defend yourself. And there are limitations to what you should have to take. Um, and then on the flip side, with the child who is accused of being a bully, there's discipline, like I can't just expect the school to rectify that and teach that. As a parent, I had to support. And I remember going into the principal's office and I sat my child right in front of the principal and I said, you will look this man in the eye, you will answer every question honestly and know that you have a consequence here at school and you will have a consequence at home. And that's the only way to get children shaken up to realize what they're doing or how they're doing it. Cause sometimes it's innocent. You don't know, you're just boys play or say silly things because they have that jovial banter of like being tough, but you have to understand there is ripple effect. What you feel is playful, may not be playful. It is about the interpretation of that other person and how they feel that. So I think education is a big piece and consequences at all times at some, in some form or fashion.
Right. Uh, how can the school board support teachers?
I believe that they could support teachers and I can tell you, teachers would probably say, let's give us a raise. How can we get that raise? But also getting them the resources in the classroom, let's help them get the materials that they need, get the training that they need. Um, I think ironically, I don't know how these t- teachers wrap their minds around this new math Common Core math. Um, I remember taking the course and it wasn't even a course, it was like a fun day at at, um, Jane Long to learn how to do this Common Core math. And I'm like, can I just borrow from my neighbor? I don't want this box. I wanna count it out. Can we go back to those um times where you had the sheet of all the multiplication questions and you had two minutes to do them? Those were easy. That was easier than trying to figure out the box, but to the student learner, it is, it is reaching them. So I do believe giving teachers the support and resources and maybe that does come down to a bigger race. How how do we get that? What do we do? Or applying for grants so they are not utilizing their own funds to to build their classrooms.
Right. So how how would you assure or or ensure the teachers are properly uh evaluated and held accountable?
That is, I think the state of Texas has some metrics. We haven't been able to utilize those metrics because of like what happened with COVID, they didn't use, they do use the testing and the scores. But I don't think that should be the source of a teacher's evaluation. We need to, um, for myself, I would like face to face evaluations. Working with the teachers, maybe having a peer. In the business world, you may have been exposed to like those three sixty reviews where you're evaluate, you evaluate yourself. You're evaluated by a supervisor, you're evaluated by a peer. And then you take all that information, gather it together and use it to teach and or reflect and learn, how do I better deliver this information? Or how do I say this piece of information without offending someone or how do I get this information to every learner? Cuz teachers unfortunately have to deliver their information to a wide variety of learners. And sometimes every child does have the additional supports to help them get there and sometimes they don't, most of the time the teachers are trying to figure out how do I get this information to this child?
Uh, what is your message to your district?
My message to the district is that I hope they give me a chance. Going out and voting for me, because I promise I'm going to advocate for our parents. Become a better community partner with our city. Um, invest in not just our gifted kids, but all children. Even the children with learning disabilities, even our children with um severe intellectual disabilities. They deserve the supports that we can provide and we need to dig harder to see how we can support every child. Also, working with, I love the C T E program, which is the, the certificate programs, not not necessarily the pathway that gets you to college, um, but the pathway that gets you those certificates to get you into the workforce. Some of our students need that to be able to afford to go to college. But some of our students, that's what they're really interested in, the application of these skills, learning it, not necessarily going into blend to do a certificate program, but also taking English reading and writing and and biology, which which is why then they may not be interested in those things.
Well, Audrey, anything else you wanna add to the podcast before we go?
I think you've asked me lots of questions, sir, so I hope that I did well.
So you're good? Wanna say some shout outs to to all of B C S, wanna say hi to anybody?
Um, thanks to Mayor Bobby Gutierrez, Bubby Seymour. And every other one of my endorsers and Manuel Longoria for putting me on this podcast and making me feel relaxed and answering his questions.
It was fun, it was nice seeing you again. I appreciate you being on the podcast and uh, I wanna wish you good luck.
Thank you.
And uh, you know, you're, you're very qualified. Great person and and uh, I hope you win. And uh, after you do that, maybe do another podcast and.
Oh, that would be great, cuz I would like to inspire other parents to actually apply or app, run for the board. More parents we have, the better.
Right, so uh, thank you again and please subscribe to Does It Settle with Monroe? And uh, you know, we got a new subscriber. And uh, we we see you guys next time and thank y'all for watching. Brigando, alright, see y'all, see y'all next time, thank you.
Thank you.